The United States of America. And to the Republic.
To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the good and evil.
Thank you. Kind of a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, so move. One second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approval of the minutes from the board special session on April 1st of the motion to approve.
So move again.
For a second.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody? And item B3B, the Board of Education Special Session Meeting of April 6, 2020. Have the motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, what was that?
I abstained, I wasn't there at that.
All right. And that was Andrew abstaining.
You know, can I just add something? I really like having the letters on there, especially those that we all don't receive, so that, you know, we can see, I know you kind of summarize them for us when they come through, but it's nice to be able to read the rest of the text on the ones we don't specifically see. So just.
That's what we said we would do, to add the whole letter, so that public comment was, I just read the entirety.
Right, right, but I like doing that even going forward if we have regular meetings, but we could discuss it.
The next board meeting is April 29th, next Wednesday. And.
Frank.
Next item is school closure update.
Okay, sure, let me see if I can share my screen with all of you. Are you able to see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, just some quick updates, we actually did have a lot of activity this week. On Tuesday, we had our meeting with our health director, just gave us an update on the three towns in our district, Suddington, Plainville, and Middlefield, with diagnosed 10 to 13 cases per day. His feeling based on this data is that we will not reach a peak until the mid or end of May. We did have quite a few, quite a bit of discussion on Tuesday about, in Plainville, Suddington, and for us in Durham, about the use of our fields and parks, and increasing concerns about the use of our, you know, all of our tracks and fields. You know, obviously, the health director, as well as the rest of us, are really hopeful that we have safe places for people to go, to exercise, to be outdoors, but are growing increasingly concerned about the use, kind of the inappropriate and unsafe use of those areas. Today, we had a call at 2 o'clock with Commissioner Cardona, who immediately addressed the fact that he is working with the governor, and if a decision is made to extend the school closure, they're trying to do that sooner rather than later. We also are seeing some increased efforts in terms of a focus on what reentry will look like. He, when asked by some of the superintendents, the commissioner advised us that we should begin distance learning planning for summer rather than in-person at this time. Of course, we're all talking about graduation, and if there was at all possibility for an in-person graduation with a limited amount of guests, that he recommended at this point to plan for something at the end of the summer, potentially into the fall. He did caution, though, the growing concern, as we're seeing across the country, more public protests, that a concern that, you know, there is a possibility of hosting a graduation and limiting the number of guests, that people might have a hard time with and potentially protest. Talked about the importance of the work of superintendents with our municipal leaders, but really talked about the fact that we need to pay attention to our budget in the coming years in terms of the type of support our schools will need and our students will need. We did have some conversation on that call about the CARES Act funding, and what they're saying is specifically, we could anticipate about 80% of what we receive in our current Title I funding. So our current Title I funding is 53%, so if that formula stays, it would be 80% of $53,000. The State Board of Education will get 10% of the CARES Act funding for the state of Connecticut, and 90% would go to local education associations such as our district, and are, should be targeted for the areas that I've listed there. They have created regional advisory teams who will, each district will be part of a regional advisory team, or overseen by a regional advisory team. Those teams, those educational teams that are working with the various districts are also working closely with the reopen Connecticut Task Force, and will begin to inform us about reopening guidelines. Of course, they're working very closely with the CDC and DPH. Governor Lamont had a conference call this evening at 5 o'clock, very brief call, and really was nothing that significantly pertain to education, just increasing in testing sites, and then a facility that will have the ability to clean and reuse at 95 masks. A big topic has been the support for small businesses, and more information about food sources being available for people. In terms of what's happening for us in District 13, many of you know, we sent a survey to all of our parents and all of the teachers. Corey worked to disaggregate that data and take a look at it, along with the school principals and the coaches, and have, everyone has done an incredible job of taking the feedback that we got, looking at the type of tech support that will be needed, the type of support that teachers need, and really will go into phase two, focusing on a number of issues, but in particular, that kind of more what we're calling live instruction, that would include pre-recorded lessons, as well as some real-time connection with teachers. So there's been a rollout plan that has been created by Corey, vetted by, you know, teacher leaders as well as the principals, and she will go over that in great detail with everyone at the student achievement meeting. The, we've created a proposal for quarter four grading that I shared with the board. This has taken, you know, a lot of conversation on behalf of our team, but have really relied on Beth and Brian, as well as Scott Sedinsky, to come up with this. They have talked to, you know, obviously, their school counselors, they've also looked at some of the protocols that were created by other districts, but as you can see at the high school, they're talking about changing the weighting for quarter one and two to 30%, reducing the weighting for quarter three to 20%, and the fourth quarter, which would be a pass with distinction, pass or fail, would count for 10% of the grade. There, you have greater detail there, and I'm happy to take any questions about this or any concerns that the board has, we can talk about it this evening, as well as, I'm happy to take any questions about the decisions that were made there. As I noted in my email, I have a meeting tomorrow with the superintendents from the learn area, this has been a very important topic for all of us. And I will say, a part of, we were kind of getting to a point where we had finalized our decision-making, and then really started to think about what the impact would be if, in fact, we have to continue distance learning into the fall, or, you know, just kind of, we're continually running two scenarios, back to school in the fall, where we have students in our classrooms, and we're back to grading, or potentially back to distance learning in the fall, and then getting back to live instruction. So what would that look like for grading? What we want to be able to do is by Friday, let our students and our parents know, this is what the grading is going to look like. Corey and the elementary principals, as well as some of the teacher leaders, are still really continuing to look at what that grading for quarter four will look like at the elementary school, but as I noted, there'll be a focus on participation and completion. What we're finding, you know, if you hadn't joined when Jamie was talking about his students, kind of a, we're inspired by our students and what they're doing, and even for some of our students who maybe with our traditional classroom learning may have struggled, we're seeing another side of kids. I have a little bit of a clip, a lot of our students are doing innovative things, and I wanted to share with you what one of our freshmen in high school did in terms of creating this YouTube series.
Hello, and welcome to Christine. I'm Christine, and I love making music, crafting, being with my friends and family. Learning, science, being outside, and making videos for fun. Watching all different types of YouTubers inspired me to share my passions on this media. My hope is that you will find my channel as a place to come to, and learn some tips and tricks, explore, have fun, and most importantly, be yourself. Everyone is welcome in this creative community. I'll be posting once a week, so be sure to subscribe and hit the notification bell so you'll know when another video is up. Speaking of videos, topics will range from music, to crafts and cards, and maybe even some scientific experiments. If you have any ideas for videos you'd love to see, write a comment below so that I can try to make happen. One more thing, at some point in each video, I will have either a happy quote or a tip for the week. Today, I want to leave you with this wonderful quote by Ellen DeGeneres. We need more kindness, more compassion, more joy, more laughter. I definitely want to contribute to that.
Just a little bit of an example of what we're seeing with our students, and just really how impressed we are in the way in which that they're addressing this very challenging time, and what they're doing to really maximize their outreach. Speaking of which, we're continuing to talk about prom and graduation, which is a huge area of interest for our high school seniors. The seniors were all surveyed, and they were invited to meet with Mr. Falcone and Mrs. Malillo virtually, to talk about some specific plans. So right now, we've kind of landed in the creation of a virtual graduation ceremony, as well as plans for a live graduation ceremony, should that be able to happen. So we have Mr. Petronio, who is our athletic director, who'll be kind of overseeing the creation of the virtual graduation, because obviously, without spring sports, he has the availability of time. And I think, as you saw, there was an article in the paper this weekend, where one of our students, Missy Martika, was interviewed about prom, and again, I think it was just another example of District 13 students being, you know, real kids, but also very responsible and aware of what's happening in the world, and what it means for them. I will share the staffing chart with you on Friday, we're just kind of changing the formatting, and making sure that everyone has something to do while we're working on distance learning, and generally not able to be in our buildings. We have, tomorrow, we will distribute cellphones to all our school secretaries, as well as some of our staff at the central office. We want people who need to call the school to actually be able to talk to someone, so we, thanks to Ken, again, we got some old-school cellphones that are about the size of walkie-talkies. And so each school will have a number that's assigned to the cellphone, and that will be on our website, if people call the school, they'll get the cellphone number, so that they can talk to our school secretary, and she'll be able to direct calls. And just as a reminder, in terms of the payment of staff, that is part of our, part of the executive order, it does say, you know, to the extent practicable, but any failure to comply with that could impact funding that we are expecting from the federal government. And then this morning, the negotiation with DATCO was finalized, Kim and I have had a few conference calls with their team, including their CFO, and today, Kim finalized that, and we were happy to see that the projection that we made initially, with essentially an 80% payment from District 13 to DATCO, was where we landed, and Kim can talk a little bit more about that. We're continuing, obviously, with our facilities maintenance, our custodial crew is in, we, as I talked about earlier, we have continued the use of our track and field and courts, but we do have growing concern about that, and may be forced if there's a continuation of a disregard for the rules that we have posted, we may need to close that. We also, there's the potential that the Water Main Project on Picket Lane, and Kim may have some more information on this, she and I only talk three times a week, so I may have missed this, if there's any changes on this. There's a potential that the Water Main Project could begin at the end of April, and go into probably the beginning of June, which could cause the closing of Picket Lane, so our responsibility of managing that may happen through that. Our meal distribution, although the state of Connecticut has delivered about 2 million meals since the school closure to schoolchildren, our average is 12 students weekly. We, whenever I do a parent update, I'm sure to include information on free and reduced lunch, so that if the financial situation of any of our families changes, they can participate in our food program. Tech support has just been outstanding, under the guidance of Ken, and we, kind of the big push was to make sure that we, that our teachers had devices, our support staff had devices and training, and that we kind of cast out again and again to students, to make sure that students had Chromebooks at home. There's a potential, as we increase our face-to-face connection with our teachers, that we may hear from students or families who still need a device, so we'll be sure to deal with that at that time. And we're kind of morphing into the tech support, that is really, how are we facilitating enhanced instruction? What are some of the, kind of the bells and whistles, and different applications that people can use? So we've got a great tech support team there, working with us. And then in the area of well-being, at our most recent administrative meeting, we really talked specifically about the fact, in what ways are we making sure that we are connected with every single student in our district? So our administrators were touching base with their teachers, to make sure that if we're seeing anyone who's kind of dropping off, that we have a system of support and connection, so that if we have students who need that connection, we certainly have enough staff members who can be doing, reaching out, whether it's via email or phone calling. Our administrators are, we are in meetings a lot, and team meetings and department meetings, team leaders, instructional leaders, coaches, they're meeting with Corey, with their principal, with their own teams, and our principals are beginning to make phone calls to their staff, just to do a little bit of a check-in. Mary Ellen and I finalized, with our contacts at CCSU, a proposal, which was, actually, I'd like to share it with the board, they did such a comprehensive job in terms of suggesting to us some possible support in a very differentiated manner that they could do for our staff. What we're going to do is begin a webinar session for the staff at Strong School, who is currently working with CCSU, and then that webinar will also take place at the other schools. Dave, can you come get the puppy? The, part of the reason we began doing this is because I participated in a webinar with Yale, where, forgetting the name of the department, with Mark Brackett, and there, our last webinar, and it really has to do with kind of emotional well-being, had 1,000 participants, and so we see that, you know, this is a challenging time, there's a need for it, and we think that it will be a good idea to support all of our staff in this way. And that's what I have for our update since April 6. And I'm happy to take any questions that you have about any of the areas that I touched on. Thank you.
I just wanted to say really quick that Rebecca's teacher from John Lyman posted some videos of some of the Cog and Chog students reading books for the children, which I really thought was really nice, and she enjoyed listening to those today. So I don't know if that was for a class, or if they just did it out of the goodness of their heart, but I thought it was really nice for them to do that.
Thanks for acknowledging that.
Kathy, CARES Act puts like $100 million to the state, but he hasn't decided how that's going to get distributed yet, right?
$111 million, sorry to jump in there, but the $111 million is that Title I funding, so we're only going to get 80% of the $53,000.
Oh.
An additional $27 million, that is to the governor's discretion, but that's pretty much going to be targeted for the higher impacted areas.
Right. Know that the, watching my daughter in their responsibility, and you too, Jamie, must, it's very difficult, I think, to be teaching and having your kids at home, trying to teach them as well, so I've been watching how many hours that they're putting in, and it seems like they're spending a really long time in their jobs today, probably longer than they did when they were at school.
Well, you know, we're here, we're here for children, and this is a full-court press, and every, everyone is involved in this, and supporting one another, and making plans, and, you know, I think we're really, you know, in the next couple of weeks, we will really begin to focus on, you know, specifically, what are the needs, we're going to see, what type of curriculum compacting can we do, what types of enrichment intervention, how might we flex our schedule? So those are, those are all considerations that we've had, and we know we need to begin that planning right away.
Some of my grandkids are anxious to see their teachers, too, so that's going to be helpful to have the live interaction as well.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, being rolled out next week in terms of training and support for teachers, and, you know, it's complicated, it's a little more complicated than what meets the eye, and we are certainly in no way trying to work any slower than we have to. And I think on Monday, when Corey reviews that rollout plan with the Student Achievement Committee, then I'll share that with the board, just if there are other people who weren't able to attend that meeting, just so you have a greater depth of understanding of what's happening and when.
And Misty, we did raise the issue yesterday on the people using the balls and soccer and stuff on the football field, and I think we were, Jimmy and Daley were talking about putting up a little stronger sign, indicating that, you know, the thing will have to be closed, if people still stop playing with the balls and stuff on the court.
Yeah, Kath reached out to me earlier, I mean, I kind of think honestly, unless the trooper is up there telling people they can't do it, it's not going to change anything. Because I mean, I did speak to a couple people, and I, I mean, I just said, you know, the checks are going to have to get closed if you guys aren't going to listen to the rules, and a couple people said to me that they just didn't care. So, I mean, pretty, but I mean, I feel like I am a healthcare provider, and I have a lot of friends and family that are out there every day risking their lives, and it's just really frustrating to me. So, I mean, I know that it's hard, because we don't have any control over a lot of this, but somebody was there today, and the trooper did nothing, is what my husband just wrote to me. So, I mean, somebody said to me the other day, the trooper was here, and they didn't say anything to me, so I don't know why you're saying something. So I'm happy to reach out to Laura myself, if that's what has to happen, but I mean, it's, I don't know who's gonna, I don't know who's gonna be the rule enforcer, but if there's not a rule enforcer, it's not gonna stop.
Yeah, I was in touch with Laura after I heard from you, and Ed and Laura and I are, especially Laura and I are, know that we're close to needing to make a decision about this.
Is there, is there not a intermediate step that you could have, where the town passed some ordinance that, you know, put some bite into the enforcement? I just hate to close down areas that people view as, you know, a component of their well-being because of a few people that don't abide by rules, and I always lean to more, don't punish the people that are, you know, are adhering to rules and doing anything else, and just because of the few bad apples, and I'm just wondering if there's a way to put some ordinance where they can, fines can be levied against people that are breaking rules, or something like that, as opposed to closing everything down.
Middlefield's Park and Rec issued an order about use of the park, and like, not using the place gate, but you can use the walk areas, and by them issuing the order, it carries the weight of an ordinance, and does come with a $95 fine that can be levied if people are not listening. And then the town took the further step of dumping sand or dirt on the skate park to prevent people from using that, and removed all of the hoops from the basketball court. So the last time they were over at the park, someone saw a mother teaching a child how to ride a bicycle on the basketball court. So, so I mean, there's things that can be done that may help, but again, you gotta, you know, people have to have some respect for other people, and that's really what it comes down to.
I'll follow up with Laura, and let you know where we're, you know, what we can do, because the, you know, that question was raised a couple of weeks ago on the governor's conference call, the very same thing, is can people be fined or arrested? And, and they can be. I'll talk to Laura, I didn't, you know, Missy, I didn't know how often the trooper is there, the last time we talked about it was kind of like, when he could be there, he would be there. But, you know, this is new information for me in terms of But, you know, this is new information for me in terms of the officer's involvement with going out on the field if people are out there having soccer practice, for instance.
Yeah, I mean, I know we only have one trooper, like, and he obviously has other things to do rather than sit there, but, I mean, when I was up there over the weekend, it looked like a normal day in April on a nice day. I mean, it was packed, and it was just, it's disheartening, it really is. And, I mean, the same thing with the tennis courts, I don't know, you know, what the rules are on that, but I mean, practically every tennis court was being used. And I know like at Strong, like the basketball, no one was at Strong that I saw, but I mean, the basketball hoops are still up and things like that. So, it's, it's just leading people to want, and I mean, I want everyone to get back to normal, I do, but it's not going to happen this way.
The basketball courts at the high school, I think at Strong, too, are sealed on the top.
Yeah.
They put boards up on top of them so they can go by. Any other questions or comments, Kath? You know, it's, I always find it amazing sitting in in those meetings, how much is getting done without anybody looking, being next to each other? So, it's tremendous amount of activity. Next item is our budget discussion. Kim, Kath, you want to start?
I'm going to share, I'm going to share a little presentation, so bear with me to see if I can get this working up. Okay, do you see it?
Yep.
Okay, great. Bear with me. There we go. Okay, so, this is the, called the Board of Education Proposed 2021 Budget. And what this budget represents is, in discussions we had at the last Board of Education meeting about the anticipated surplus, which I quoted at about $683,000 was my best educated guess. And I had broken that down into areas where I felt that there would be a surplus. That, part of that has been applied to this budget under the second box down, which is the revenue. You'll notice about, right above state and federal, two lines above, it says 1920 estimated surplus applied, and it's 616,501. And that was a number put in there truthfully to get us to a 0% budget. That combined with expense cuts, expenditure cuts that were discussed and agreed upon in our administrative council meeting, and I did provide the list of what those were, and I do have another slide with those cuts coming up. But that represented about $168,000 of cuts. So, the two combined were to be able to give us a net 0% budget increase. You'll notice there's a 1.5% in the expenditures, but the additional fund balance amount, the 616 that we're able to apply, was what is able to get us to the zero. That leaves us with about 65, what's my notes there, $67,000 that would then be deployed to the fund balance to go to 2122. So, you know, typically, we go a year out with our fund balance. This year, because the surplus is, you know, known this early in the year, or easily anticipated this early in the year, even though it's un-audited, we do have the ability to apply it to the 2021 budget. So, that was sort of the strategy that we talked about at the last board meeting, so I've applied it here. And then leaving the $67,000 for the 2122. Should we not need the entire 616 surplus? Or should say, should our surplus be higher than the 683? Then that will go into the 2122 surplus as well. So, this is the best guess. In terms of the transportation, I did have conversations with Echo, a few, the most recent was today. We did kind of talk about an 80% cap, nothing over 80%, with assurances that any staff that is rehired back, which we're hoping is all, that they will assure to us and provide documentation that those people are back on the payroll. We are to pay actual costs, actual incurred costs, so there would be documentation proving that. If not all drivers were willing to come back or available, say they got another job, would rather stay on unemployment, whatever the case is, those savings would then be passed on to us, so if we couldn't get our full workforce back. I haven't signed anything with them, or any kind of, you know, they're going to attest that they're not going to be unjustly enriched by this, which is part of the executive order, and as well as providing the proper documentation so that we can then verify that those are actual expenditures that we're paying. But having said that, when Dr. Serino and I talked about the 80/20, that really is kind of the case. You know, the 80% is what we'll be paying, or we'll be experiencing the 20% reduction. Not unusual, some other districts are paying all of it, some districts are paying none of it. I think most districts, we did a whole CASBO survey, most districts are coming up with an 80% agreement with their contractors. So, I think we're pretty much in line. Like Dr. Serino said, if we don't comply by the executive order to pay staff and our transportation contractors, as well as our outplace tuition contractors, we could face being a non-compliance of a state statute. That could then subsequently result in our ECS funds being withheld, our federal funding, our Title I, as well as a state investigation as to why we didn't comply. So, it's advisable to comply, even though sometimes it makes sense that you're spending money to not get a lot back in the Title I, there's heftier reasons to comply than the financial side. This, the line items you'll see up on the top have changed since the last proposal you saw, simply because there were those budget cuts in there of $168,000. But additionally, we increased this by an extended summer school program. We had had a program in there, and we actually doubled it, because the thought was that we're going to be needing to be able to provide these opportunities to the kids, whether it be remotely or in person. We didn't feel that we had enough in there for summer school. So, that does incorporate an increase to the summer school program in there. So, 1.5% would be what the town, typically, the town members would vote on in referendum, the expenditures, more so than the net, is zero. So, while it appears to be a voting for an increase, which the expenditures did increase, the net that the town's allocations would be, would be the same as last year, except for enrollment changes, the percentage change for enrollment, as well as any ECS cuts that are in the budget for next year. Here are the adjustments that I stated that are in the budget. The 1920 anticipated surplus was the 616,000. The additions, expanded summer school, $12,900 was for staff and $500 for supplies, that was an increase to the budget. And then the deletions were, you know, nothing that we didn't discuss at the last board meeting, which was professional services, we figured with our custodians, we wouldn't need to hire professional movers because we have the manpower with school being, you know, if it should be closed for the rest of the year. Buildings and grounds, you know, we tried to take things out that, you know, the music room carpet at Memorial should be replaced, it's stained, could we postpone it until next year? Yeah, probably. So, we took that out. There was money in there for a leased vehicle, a leased truck for buildings and grounds. Again, we'll revisit that next year. And then various supplies, went through each, the buildings, administrators, what can you cut? They're all put in fourth responsible budgets to begin with, but we came up with $12,000 worth of different supplies in different areas that we would be able to cut out. The biggest hitter, which made any movement at all, was the capital and the equipment line, and that was the booster gym floor. Desperately needs to be done, can be repaired for yet another year. You know, it would be great to have a level of comfort that we will address this with the next budget, next year, because it is something, at some point, it's just not going to be usable, but Jimmy and Sue figure we can repair it again for another year. So, that was 116,000. So, that made up the bulk of it. We have some fence repair for athletics, a baseball cage, and a spotlight for the auditorium that, we're able to purchase the spotlight this year with the supplies fund, so that was removed from next year. And the fence repair and the baseball cage, again, we're just going to postpone that out another year. Nothing that we can't do without for 2021, but, you know, made a commitment, and, you know, really should address these issues for 2122. And then China, travel was removed, travel and the related expenditures for that was removed from dues and fees. So, it's about $168,000 reduction in expenditures. The next slide was just the capital reserve, just showing, reminding you what is in that capital transfer. The turf replacement, $110, which we would have one more cycle, next budget cycle of 110 to fully fund that. So, that was sort of an important thing to continue in this capital reserve item. Classroom furniture replacement cycle ongoing, unanticipated building, equipment and maintenance reduced to 30 this year from what we've been doing is at 50 the last, well, one or two years, because of the various projects we have going on. We felt comfortable we would be able to decrease that a bit. Sprinkler system, phase two, phase one is in the bonding package, phase two, we need to start saving for that. So, that was important to be included. So, out of all these things, we felt that the gym floor, that you'll notice on the bottom, is now zero. That's what we decided to move out of it. So, when I say "we" with Dr. Serino, it was me, it was Jim, it was Sue, collectively together, and then present that to you as our best recommendation. Do you have any questions? I can go back to this page.
With the, you know, I saw that you said you were going to expand the summer school, so I think summer school was originally budgeted for 16 days. So, adding that additional money, how many days do you anticipate expanding ESY, too?
I'll let Dr. Serino answer that. This is actually, we expanded the summer school that's not ESY. It's done through the curriculum department.
Oh, okay. So, then, if that's the case, then I would say, I think we need to put more money towards ESY for our kids. But, you know, I think Bob Y even spoke about this at like a few meetings back, you know, when we were talking about ESY, you know, which is for our most vulnerable population, that, you know, 16 days is, you know, it is what it is. But I think now, when you've taken these kids out of their environment for three months, then we're only going to give them 16 days in July, and then expect them to return to whatever normal might be in September, I just don't think it's really adequate, and I think we could do better.
You know, as I mentioned, you know, our caution today with the commissioner or the advice was to plan for distance learning this summer. And I hear what you're saying if, and I think when we were looking at this, Christine, when we, you know, which was even just two or three weeks ago, that we were thinking, just based on the predictions at the time, that we were going to be able to get into summer school probably in August. I feel, and I don't ever want to come across as I'm the person who's the DPH specialist here. I'm, you know, going off of the information that we're getting, that looks like summer school very possibly could be a distance learning summer school. I think, though, that there is money in the summer school budget for us to be flexible if we actually are in person to expand the number of days for our students, or to really look at what type of, you know, what type of programming could we give to students who have significant special needs, who qualify for ESY, to really bolster, to really bolster those skills? That is it just, would it just be summer school, or would it be kind of extension during the school year once we're back? It's so hard to have that intensive, short-term to kind of recoup loss that's probably having. So, I think that with the summer school budget we have, if we are back in session, we do have the, we do have the ability to expand the number of days.
And then the flip side, because I do think, I mean, my personal opinion is, I think there probably will be distance learning for ESY, but then, so the flip side of that is that, would we be able to provide more because we're saving the money for like maybe not being in the building, or whatever it is, to like expand that way as well?
Yes, and we've talked about that, that we are, we will likely be in the same scenario if, in fact, we're not back in the buildings, and that we will be having conversations with the board of a kind of a redirecting and a reallocating of funds to the areas that we identify. The other, you know, there is money in the CARES Act that is supposed to be directed towards intervention and compensatory education. So, I, you know, I know that there'll be funding there to address that issue as well.
Any other comments on the budget? Our intention was to approve a budget to go to public hearing tonight if we can, so if you have any other comments, I'd like to move forward on this.
It's, Missy, what's the public hearing going to be like? Is it just going to be people emailing you their comments? How is that going to work?
I think, you know, we've talked about having it on May 13th, right? Kath?
Yeah, May 13th, at 6:00 PM. And Ken and I have talked about some other possibilities where we could actually have people participating and asking questions, so that it wouldn't follow the same format of, you know, you're in listen-only mode, and you can, and you can only submit comments via email. If, in fact, this is the, it's actually, probably should say, this is actually the superintendent's proposed budget, once you vote on it, just sorry, I didn't catch that, Kim. Once you vote on it, then it will be the board-approved budget. And then we will get that up on the website, put the survey, the survey to get feedback from the community will be online, people can give feedback to the survey, the board will be able to, what happens if we do a Google form, is that the results just populate a spreadsheet, and the board will be able to just go in and view. So, between tonight and the time of the public hearing, there'll be a number of opportunities for people to give feedback, as well as get information, including, we're working on greater participation at the, okay, sorry, I'm communicating with Ken here, to have a call-in option in real time during the public hearing.
And we could put the documents up on the website at the same time. So, we would have the website up, and then people could call in, or something like that. But we also will send out, you know, the normal letter that we send out every year, that shows all the budget and the trends and all that stuff, will go out to every homeowner at the beginning of May. And, you know, that's the normal letter that we send out, that shows the impact of, and what we'll be voting on. So, every home will get a document, but still have all the, you know, the survey form that we'll also send out either separately or with that. We haven't looked at that yet, have we, Kath?
Sorry.
The survey form, we could attach it to our letter that goes out.
Yeah.
This is how you email in. This is how you email in.
Yeah, we should have something along that line.
And I believe that our printer has indicated that they can, the person who does our printing of the, what we're required to send out to all, all community members is able to do the printing for us this year.
Oh, good. Essential for a day anyway, right?
I have a couple of questions and a comment or two, if I may. First off, in terms of this kind of overlaps communications, a number of people, an email had been sent out or a letter had been sent out to the parents from the superintendent's office stating that there was seven staff additions. And I think it's important, we note that it's a net of two, not seven. And the reason I'm bringing that up now is that a net two addition to salary to staff, if you look at the salary line item 100, an additional two employees is about 0.7%. And that the increase here is under 0.5%. So I think it's important to note that. So our overall, although we're increasing the staffing level a net two, we're actually only seeing an increase in the salary line item of 0.5. And that's also taking into account that contractually we're paying our employees between 2% and 3% higher wages. So the net 0.47% has something to do with the composition of the staff, the tenure of the staff, and also the change in the vacancy factor from 0.98 to 0.95. So I don't know, Kim, if you want to comment on which of those had the biggest impact or, or not, but I'm sure the vacancy factor was probably the bigger contributor.
Sure, the vacancy factor is the biggest contributor.
Okay. But so that, that has given us the opportunity to maintain that salary down line item at 0.47. And considering everything we're doing, I think that is, is really good. The question I have, the estimated surplus for the year, that estimate is based on continued operation of the distance learning for the balance of the year?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. If the students do go back to school early, earlier than next year, sometime this year, will we have an adverse, you know, cost? Is it considerable? Is it marginal?
So, you know, it would, what would affect us would be the transportation. Clearly, if we went back, we would be paying the additional 20, provided how many days, you know, if, if in that, in fact, were to happen. You know, our electricity, our electricity usage would go up a bit. Would athletics, you know, the spring sports season start? Because that's a big, that's a big driver, that's 123,000 that we're saving. And then also in salaries, 160,000, so that's substitute. So if we were to start back up again, would we be using those substitute lines? So difficult to say, but a lot of the things, like we would really keep a close eye on things. Some of the supplies, a lot of the supplies, you know, we're just saying if you don't need it to distance teach, let's wait and buy them, you know, next year. Or if you've already put consumables in for next year that you didn't use this year, you just didn't purchase this year, I'm sorry, we were not purchasing them this year. So I think that if we were to watch, you know, very carefully every expenditure and weigh it out, we would not, it would not be catastrophic.
No, but, but we do need to understand then as a board, when we move this forward, that should the students go back to school, there may be some implications that we're going to have to pay attention to.
That could be.
But we'll probably know that before May 15th, when we're going to the public hearing. And definitely before June 1st, when we're actually going to approve it. Okay. All right, okay, that was one of my questions. The other thing I want to make sure everybody on the board, as well as in the public, is fully, fully aware of is that the surplus applied, the 1920 estimated surplus applied, and Kim mentioned this, but I want to make sure everyone is absolutely clear about this. We're applying $616,000 towards next year's budget. The following year budget, we won't have that luxury. We won't have those funds available to apply to the following year budget. This is a one-time application of those funds. So what that means practically speaking is that if the following budget is absolutely flat, zero, no change at all, it's going to represent to the towns, everything else being equal, a $616,000 increase to the towns. So I just want to make sure everybody's fully aware of that. I'm fully in favor of this budget and the way it's progressing. And I think, but I don't think, I think we need to set the expectation now to the towns. You can't expect another $616,000 in zero budget next year because you kind of used it. You've, you've used up the surplus.
Well, there's also the fact that we actually are in, not in a full hands-on school. We probably won't have athletics very much next year, at least at the beginning of the fall. And, and also if we move ahead with Lyman, we'll have the 2122 budget may have some impact on the ability to close Lyman in that year as well. So there might be offsetting issues, Bob.
No, I, I appreciate that. That's why I said, all things being equal.
Yep.
All things being equal, this is a one-time available funding because of the extraordinary circumstances. That's all I want it to be absolutely clear about, Bob. I agree with you 100%. You know, every year something comes up where we get some savings, but something can also come up where we either don't get those savings or we have extraordinary expenses. So I just wanted to just level set so that everybody, you know, goes into this, understanding what we're looking at.
Also, I think in our information, we're still under the, we're still lower than our budget was six years ago. So that's still part of the, what this board has been able to do with the administration is to really hold the growth of our budget very still and still do this next year as well.
Yep, yep. But I just, you know, let's, you know, I just, in terms of full disclosure, important to note that this is a, this is a big move. And I'd also like to thank the administration for working hard, given the request to do what we could to try to come in with a zero net. The work that went into identifying where there were maybe some potential savings, maybe we could do things a little bit differently. I really want to thank everybody on the staff and the administration for pulling together and coming through with this budget. And I definitely, you know, support this budget. When you would like a motion to move this to, to the town, I'd be happy to make the motion.
So you want to make the motion to approve the proposed superintendent's budget to go to public hearing?
Sure, I'll make that motion now because there'll be further discussion and my fellow board members will have a chance to weigh in. So yeah, I'll make that motion now.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Lucy, can you hear me?
One of the things that Bob also brought up is, and we did have, still in the budget, the support, the additional playground equipment at Memorial and Lyman. And the town board of finance has supported, indicated last week that they're going to continue their $25,000 to match that funding.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up when we discussed public comments, issues from the public. I did receive word that Thursday I presented to them what was happening in the board's position on that, the board of ed's position on that. And, and then I think it was the following week on Monday or Tuesday, Jim Irish contacted a number of us and let us know that the board, the board of finance unanimously approved keeping the $25,000 expenditure in the town and Middlefield's budget to support the school district's efforts at the memorial courts. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
Any other comments on the budget?
So.
I just, oh, go ahead, Andrew.
Oh, um, so I, I don't know, I had, I had mixed feelings on this budget. I just, I'm just not sure if we really are investing for the real possibility that we will be continuing distance learning most of next year. I mean, I, I see it as the first, first instance, when we go back to school, if the cases decline and that we, these cases start to rise again and we're going to go back into a distance learning period, it's going to be compounded by the fact that we're going to be in influenza season. And, you know, there's the real possibility that at that point we wouldn't go back to school until March or April, if not later in the next year, until a vaccine is developed. And, you know, the things that I guess was hoping to see and would love to see in the budget is, is really significant investment in continuing education for teachers to do, you know, online learning so that we are better prepared to do distance learning, like a heavy, heavy investment so that all teachers have, you know, significant experience and that are taught in the, you know, most appropriate ways to do distance learning, that we have the available software and, you know, that can reach all the students, that we're allocating resources in ways to research, reach students that are difficult to reach. And, you know, that we have staff that are dedicated to those things that we're addressing our, you know, our vulnerable populations by more heavily investing. To me, you know, these are situations where if you want to, if you want to continue to improve and not fall behind, the, the, the plan is not to do less or status quo. It's to do more and invest heavily and be proactive moving forward. And I guess I'm just not seeing that in this budget and it concerns me moving forward. And so one thing I really want to talk about is the ability to allocate or shift resources that we have moving forward. I want, I don't want to get stuck in a situation where we've, we've already, you know, line item things in particular buckets and we can't move heavily into one area. But I still think that there, there are things that need to be happening now or that need to be happening over the summer and into the early new year that would prepare us for what I think is, you know, the most likely scenario is that we won't be in school or that we'll be doing distance learning for a majority of next year. I don't, I don't think we've had that real, that conversation. And I think we need to have it before we can adopt this budget.
I'm not sure that what that conversation would end up with. Andrew, I did send you some information that the new town chair was interested in to have this discussion pursued over the next few months is to how, what does school look like next year? Even if we're back, is it smaller classrooms? Is it morning and afternoon sessions? Is it separate busing? Is it, you know, there's a variety of other things that are going to be looked at if we bring schools back together. The other issue is that the driving economic force of, of this whole exercise is really, you know, having kids in school is critical to make sure most people can get back to work as well. There's, I, there's a, I think there's a ton of issues that are, rise up over the next few months that are we prepared for? I don't, I doubt it. Rise to the occasion to figure it out? Yeah, I think we will. I think just as Kath has done, you know, for this last 12 months, weeks, six weeks, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out or we'll come up with a way to handle it. I think, you know, if we don't have to have substitutes, we can reassign some of the salaries into other areas. If we don't have sports, we can reassign that money into other areas. And we just have to have, the board has to take those actions to move the money within the budget. Again, the, you know, the budget that we're going to adopt is just $37 million. And we can adjust it as necessary. If we find that we're short on, on supplies or short on techs, you know, we do have a new tech person in the budget. We do have a new specialist person in the budget, or I mean, enhancement. You know, so there's areas that we've added to the budget that give us some flexibility in how, how those programs be reached over the next year. But I think it's an enormous challenge right now to figure out what a budget would look like in anticipation of what's going to happen in September.
I guess what I'm just, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say that, you know, in two meetings before, we briefly touched on this question. And at the time, it seemed sufficient to understand that actually if we were to be in a distance learning situation again, that there would be substantial costs, like a good part of that $600,000 for spring costs that would be, again, be freed up. I think what I heard in your question, Andrew, was, but are we able to move funds around to meet the needs that we, which will materialize as we understand better what we need to do for distance learning? That's a tactic.
That, and then also I'm taking, I don't want to be reactive in this scenario. I don't want to get back into this situation and be like, oh, well, you know what? Well, we didn't take the, we didn't take the opportunity over the summer to really educate like our teachers and to get them up to speed and to, you know, make sure that we have the best available software platforms for reaching students. And now we're in the thick of it again and we, we haven't made that investment. This is more about being proactive than reactive. And it's also about recognizing that there are unique challenges with this and that we're going to have to overinvest in some areas, particularly where there are vulnerable populations to keep them even, you know, maintaining the same level that they are, let alone, you know, hoping for improvement. And, and that, I guess I'm just not seeing that. I'm not seeing a proactive approach moving into next year that's, that is addressing all of those things. This is not about like the anticipation, oh, well, you know, we'll find out in September and well, maybe we'll go back and then we can start shifting around thumps. And by then it's too late, you've already lost four months, five months because you're, then you're having to say, oh, do we, you know, are we still satisfied with our software platform? Are we still satisfied with like the level of kind of education that our teachers received? I think there, there's lots of things that I don't want to be in the thick of it again next year and us to be making those types of decisions then. I'd love for us to make some investment now so that we're well-prepared for this in the future.
Andrew, might I make a suggestion?
Sure.
What if we take our utilization committee and put as an agenda item to identify those areas that might need improvement, such as the platform that you just mentioned and a few other things? And let's, let's bring that to the utilization committee to work with the administration to come up with, I'd say, a comprehensive list that says, you know, here's the contingency plan, if it's distance learning next year, and what the cost may be. Because it's, it's one thing to sit here right now and say, well, it could be this and it could be that, but we don't have any basis upon which to change the budget. Going back to what Victor said, and I fully agree with what Victor said, next year's budget, if we are in a distance learning situation, will realize some of these savings that we're seeing here, not all of them. But it'll, it'll realize some of these savings. And if we have a contingency plan, if we can develop the contingency plan between now and say, the end of July, unless it takes longer than a month to, you know, buy the software and get it up and running. But if we can identify a contingency plan and the timeline. timeline, and keep the board informed, we'll also be two months further into the recovery from this virus, if there is a recovery underway. And, and then we'll know, we'll have a higher certainty whether or not the school is going to reopen or not.
I, I, I'd like to add also that this budget includes an augment to the IT department. And, you know, if they're not running around fixing routers and keep, keeping the networks running, then there's time to do other things, like new software platforms. So I think that the budget actually does have a little proactive investment in an area which is key for just when we have distance learning.
I think that we're also, and I appreciate the topic being raised, Andrew, that, you know, we're in the same situation as every single other district who's been closed down and potentially are looking at, you know, at this continuation of distance learning. And we would never, every, every single plan we're making is a plan for what about this, or what about this? There's always a Plan A, a Plan B, and a Plan C. So, I think, I think in the next couple of weeks, we will have information that, and, and it's not that we're waiting for that information to hear that we're going to be closed throughout the rest of the school year, and likely well into next year. What we will do as a team, and this is happening on a state level as well, you know, they just are hiring, I believe it's another chief academic officer with the oversight of, and the expertise of what does this kind of, what will this look like for all of us in education? What are some of the best, best methods to use in supporting student learning, advancing student learning? We are, you know, we're not, we're not trying to slow down and wait for something to happen. We have money, for instance, in professional development. We will spend that money in professional development in another area if we're doing distance learning. If we're not doing spring or fall athletics, we will have a bucket of money that can be directed to other areas. I need to know that the board, which I can't imagine that you wouldn't be, would, is going to embrace that, and, and will let the administration be the lead on this, as, as informed by the State Department of Education and other areas of specialty. We truly, we're, we're working as fast as we can. And as I said to you, you know, we're just developed Phase Two of distance learning. We're newly at this like everybody else, but we're also being informed and paying attention to, so what happens next? And it will look different. And we will, I think we have areas of the budget in technology, in software, in hardware, in supplies, in professional development, in salaries. How are we using people? Can we dedicate people who are working one-on-one for a good part of the day with children who need it the most? So it would be difficult for me to say, we need an additional amount of money if we're into distance learning, because our distance learning platform would change, the supplies would change. I don't know what that looks like yet. And I think if we are in that scenario, we're going to have funds available, because we're not going to be spending it on the areas we would if we were, if we were in the building. I want to assure you and the Board of Education, that's part of our plans as a district, it's part of our plans as a consortium group and in the state of Connecticut. And I have to say, I, I struggle to be the person to say, I think we're, this is what we're, we're potentially looking at, and I appreciate that somebody who has your background is putting it out there for discussion this evening.
Bob, is there any other comments on the budget before you?
Yeah, I would, I would like to make one final comment, if I may.
Sure.
The, this budget is showing a 1.5% increase, roughly $552,000. I just want to call everyone's attention to object, object to hundred benefits, benefits at $405,000. The medical insurance costs, I believe it was predominantly medical, is driving that $405,000, which is representative of about 80% of the increase in this budget. So, just, just another confirmation that this is a very conservative budget, and that it's a very well-thought-out budget, and it's one that the administration worked very hard to make sure that the costs would deliver the best education we can deliver without undue burden on the taxpayers. So, again, I just wanted to point that out to people.
Thank you.
Uh, Christine, I just want to be clear, because I'm not even sure where we landed with this, but the field house, because I feel like that's always a question that we get from the public, that it's not in the budget. I mean, mainly because I feel like we don't have all the information yet. And I'm sure this whole situation put a hold on getting a lot more of that work done.
It's not in the budget.
It is not in the budget.
There's no further comments, all in favor of moving forward to a public hearing on the proposed budget? Aye?
Aye.
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 Bob, can you state the date, and the time, and the, the amount for the record?
Yeah, the date would be, for the public hearing, would be 13th at 6 o'clock. I think that's correct, right? And, uh, the amount for the budget is $37 million, three, $37,371, and $908. And that's the proposed budget, the net budget, can't see right now, is $34,603,307.
Thirty-four, six oh two, two oh seven.
All right, I couldn't see the bottom line there. Okay, thank you very much. We'll get those documents out, and then we'll begin to have the public input, and then the public hearing on the 13th. And then we'll, we can, we're meeting next week, we can figure out a little bit more on how that's going to happen, right, Kath? Kathy?
I'm sorry, Bob, what was your question?
I said, we have a board meeting next week, so we can work on the public documents, right?
Sure, if, you know, if, yeah, yep.
And if there's no reason to have any issues, we can also cancel it. In terms of, and then the vote, we need to vote to determine the date to adopt the 2021 budget. It originally talked about June 1st, is that now in May? We, Kim, you have the date? Again, you're on mute.
I think we said.
Question again, I'm sorry.
The date, the second item on the item seven is to vote determined the date to adopt the 2021 budget. So we need to pick the date.
Yeah. Do you, do you have a, Dr. Serino, do you have a date?
We, hang on, Bob, I'm sorry, I thought you had it right here. I think we, um.
I did have.
The 27th.
May 27th.
Hang on, let me just pull up my, uh, do you want to move on to another item while I go into my email to look at that?
Uh, yes, I'll, we'll go, we'll go back on that. Yeah, I don't have the actual date. All right, communications, we've had several communications. First one was from Laura Francis. She sent me an email about the town meeting, or the Board of Selectmen meeting, where you decided to have a vote for the three of us, who, actually, four of us, terms that are up, three this year, one next year, and the two the following year. How do, those will get moved to the November ballot? And what's indicated is that the election of the board members at the next town meeting will, to serve to the November 21. So basically, they're, they will have an election of some sort, if you now, and whenever they can have a town meeting. And they will elect both Durham, Christine, and, and I would have to run for the election, and there'll be votes for somebody to fill those terms till November of 21. That's different than, um, determination. We have Mar attorney, who said the charter provided the method for, of just extending the terms for the various people until the 18th to the November 21 date. And so I asked Laura if she could have a, a, somebody send me the comment on it, and she did send me the finding from their town's attorney, which indicated there's three possible ways to do it. One is to do as the charter said, elect those positions, which would be, the Durham positions, which would be the three of us this year would be extended 18 months to November 21. Andrew would be extended to, also to November 21, when his term was up next year. And Missy and, um, Ricky would be extended when their term was up until, which was in '22, till the November '23 election. And then three would be elected for a four-year term, and one would be elected for a two-year term, for the first four. And then everybody would be on a final four-year schedule. Anyway, that's one method. The town attorney indicated that was appropriate. He also said there could be a vote, a town vote, and also there could be a special election. So the special, and the reason he said those other options is because the original charter decision decided, you know, indicated the method by which the terms would be extended, whereas the, since that was so long ago, there's no, he indicated the other method would be to vacate the terms, have a special election, which would take anywhere from three months to 15 months, or something like that, in order to get the special election, and it might not have been approved by the Secretary of State. But anyway, that would be the third one. In the meantime, three positions would be vacated, build that special election itself. So I think the town has picked the second option, and is, and I'll send this letter out to everybody, but it, basically, is, as a practical matter, in the current environment, town meetings are not permitted under the government's executive orders. So that an option's not available at present. In the absence of a town meeting, the decision would revert to the Board of Selectmen under the general powers to attend the affairs of the town. If the option chosen by the Board of Selectmen has not yet taken effect at the time the current emergency situation ends, a trace may be reconsidered by the special town meeting, either called by the Board of Selectmen or pursuant to a petition, petition at that time. So basically, the Board of Selectmen can decide how they want to do this vote between now and, uh, before this emergency is ended. So I'm not clear, but it sounds like there will be a vote sometime in June to replace the three of us. There would then have to be a vote the following year, for Andrew, and then the following year, again, to extend all those terms. So anyway, that's where we are. It's a little different than our attorney, we're in, but they also, his town attorney also indicates that's what the charter says, and because it's been so long, I think there's a, there's a waiver to do it the other two ways. I'll send out that letter, so you can see what it looks like. It's four pages long, so.
I, I would just like to point out the, the fact that the, one of the primary, one of the primary motivations for making the change was based on the town charter, and that it was still in force. And now that the town is saying that that has no force anymore, because it's, it's been so long and it's vacated. I, I, there just, there appears to be some, there's some inconsistencies in the, in the approach and interpretation of the town charter. I don't, I mean, I don't, Bob, I guess it would be up to you all, if you wanted to challenge that ruling, but it, it just seems a little bit disingenuous about the way that that's approached.
Yeah. It affects all of us, actually. It's just the three of us are up right away. Because all of us would have to go through the same process from zero.
To Andrew's point, though, what can, can we challenge that? Because it, I think he has a really valid point.
The, the town attorney's point is that, you know, it's been so long, and there's no, you know, this is back in 2007 or 2009, it was clear what the charter said. But, you know, our finding is that it was, do it in accordance with the charter and the town of government. So we can, I can have Matt Ritter look at it and see if there's any issue from our attorney. And, you know, and figure out the best way to approach it. I'll send the letter out from Laura, so that you can all see it. It affects every Durham member, one way or another. The other issue, I've been going to the cave, it says a Friday conference every Friday on, for all the board chairs. The issues that they have are basically the same as ours. The budget, the budget process, how to keep the budget whole enough to accommodate school next year without the town saying cut it too much, and the process for getting it approved, and, and the voting on it. They also have quite a bit of issue on the transportation issue, has been a major issue for most all the towns, is how to negotiate that. Their other issue is grading, which we'll see on Friday and Monday. Graduation and prom are also major issues for all the boards, because they're such an important event in the life of our students and the life of a senior. So they're really, you know, they felt that's a really critical issue for them to talk about as well. And next year, and summer school are both topics that are emerging. Over the next couple of months, there'll be, every Friday, they'll have an agenda item, which will include what about next year. Some of the issues that Andrew's talked about will be discussed at all, by all the board chairs. I did have, I have, I think I've been sending out some of the information, that hopefully you've gotten it, on some of the issues that is of consideration. Have you? I didn't, I think I sent out some of the stuff.
Yes.
Okay. I've had, also had two people interested in the superintendent position, which we'll talk about later. I had a letter from Jen Zettigren, who is offering to assist on project graduation. There are the people that issue, Jen is part of the group that produces project graduation, and what to do, and how to, and she's connected with Brian Falcone on select that. She also wanted to support the field house in the budget. I had another letter from Lain Chabra, Chabra, C-H-H-A-B-R-A. She wanted to know that the savings that are due are coming from this year's closed schools, that will reduce taxes in the town. that will reduce taxes in the town, and she had concern over the lack of a referendum. Again, her letter and all the other letters will be in the full minutes. And another letter from Diane, Dania Viola, with, she was concerned that we don't lose the pressure to close Lyman, because she was concerned, because we heard, because she heard us talking about playground equipment at Lyman and thought that we should continue to pursue the closure. And she was also wanted us to eliminate next year transportation to magnet, magnet schools. So those are generally the communications I've received that we'll get into the record. Any others, Bob?
Bob, that, that date is May twenty-seventh from the, because we had two different time scenarios depending on the, the public hearing. So if we do the public hearing on the thirteenth, then the district meeting and voting on the budget can be the twenty-seventh.
Okay. So for the record, it's twenty-seventh will be the district meeting and vote on the budget.
I received a text from Kathy Hinch, one of my neighbors, and she actually was looking at the staffing. And she actually had two questions. She was questioning why we're adding seven new positions. And Bob, you already brought that up. And I explained to her the situation, that it isn't seven new positions, it's actually two. And then the other piece she questioned was the coordinator position for sixth grade. She wanted to know the role that that person was going to hold, especially with social workers and other counseling staff that's available. And then she was curious about the duration, if it might be just one year or, you know, those were her questions.
Did you just get that text tonight?
No, no, I received it a while ago. Did I not send it? I mean, we, we kind of went on for several different texts. I can always copy it and send it out to you, I'm sorry.
And I'm happy to.
I think I talked to you about it, though.
I'm happy to, to call her directly tomorrow and talk to her about, about any of the questions that she has.
Okay, I, I think she was quite satisfied when I explained her.
Okay.
Sent her pictures from the budget. You know, you had your one side reductions of staffing and the other side of positions. So, you know, it was right there in black and white. And although you might, you know what, I, let me get in touch with you, because a coordinator position for sixth grade might be something that could be touched on.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
If you thought it, maybe you can put it in the, in the minutes as well.
So I just, I just have a question about the budget date, the vote, the adoption of the budget date. Our agenda says we're going to have a vote on it, to determine the date of adoption of the budget. But you're just going to decide it, Bob, is it?
We didn't have.
A vote on it.
We still have to.
We should take it. Okay. Well, I'll move that we, that the board adopt its two, two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget at its May twenty-seventh meeting.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Any other communications? If not, we can have a motion to adjourn and then everybody sign off and then get back in on the other address.
Bob, my, my RSD thirteen email's not working for some reason. Can, Bobbya Martino, can you send it to my home email?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll do that as soon as I get off. Okay, I'll make the motion to adjourn, Bob.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.